Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. All members are present with the exception of Ms. Burns. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next thing we're going to get to is public comment, Mr. Fenelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me ask you this. The last, uh, last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, I think we did the, did we do the presentation and then public comment and then? Go back to sort of things that needed to be voted on and? Is that something we want to consider now? Do you want to just go right into public comment?
Uh, with thoughts on the committee, what, uh, what does everyone feel about this? We could do the same thing we did last time, or we could go right into public comment.
Mike has his hand up.
Mr. McCauley.
Yeah, I would prefer, um, we go into seeing what the, um, plan is first because, uh, potentially there could be answers to some. Questions people may have for public comment or may raise some other questions from people in school too.
Okay, so if we, alright, so if we follow the same general procedure, then we would see the presentation, take public comment, and then take any votes that were necessary, um, on the proposals. Uh, alright, so that would also, so then we would take the, the agenda slightly out of order, um, because I think we should save the town polling location entirely until after, uh, after we're done in the first place. Um, I would also, um, ask that, um, uh, members of the public attending the call, if you could keep your, um, cameras and, uh, microphones off, like, keep yourself on mute and cameras off during the meeting. Uh, it makes it easier for us to recognize and identify, uh, school committee members and administration if they're the only ones, uh, on camera. So, uh, thank you for that. Uh, and then, uh, alright, so then we'll go into the transportation update and, uh, Dr. Brand.
Uh, thank you, Sir Ragsdale, and good evening, everyone. Bring this up here. Just one second. Can you see that presentation?
We can.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, just to clarify the full screen.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, good evening, and, uh, just for, uh, members of the community who may be joining, uh, this, this presentation is included. Uh, in the packet and, uh, will as always with other materials be posted, um, on our, uh, district website. This has, um, obviously been, uh, a little bit of an unconventional, um. Uh, meeting in terms of our timing and in terms of the materials, and so things have been, uh, not certainly lagging. Trust me when I say that we are spending endless. Uh, hours, uh, working on, uh, this project and, and on this work. Um, it's just, uh, time is not permitted or the ability to get this, uh, quite in the same sequences that we normally do. Uh, but with that said, let me move, uh, through the presentation, provide you with an overview of, uh, the information that you'll, uh, see and hear about in the coming slides. Uh, Ms. Ferretta is here, uh, with us this evening, and she will certainly be able to answer any questions that members of the committee may have. And, uh, obviously, working very closely, uh, with Miss Ferretta, uh, is also, uh, Mr. DeJury as well. So, uh, the presentation that, uh, follows includes. Um, a deeper, uh, a deeper insight in terms of the comparison of, uh, where we stood early September to last week. Um, we'll talk about ongoing improvements and next steps that we, uh, firmly believe are associated with, uh, our continued efforts to improve this system. Uh, take a moment to outline the impact of those proposals. I do want to talk, uh, briefly about morning supervision. I know that that was a topic of, uh, a little bit of conversation and some feedback. Um, and inquiry last time, and then, um, shift our focus here on this service, uh, this transportation service in terms of. Thinking about this over short, intermediate, and longer-term planning. Um, first off, uh, you know, it, um. These are, these are words and these are phrases that I know some have seen before, if you've been following this topic, but I cannot stress enough. The fact that this is an ongoing, um, adjustment, ongoing adjustments rather, that are being made to these routes. And, um. From my vantage point, there is no question that, um, tremendous, uh, improvements have been made since the very beginning of the year. And that comes about through, uh, through a couple of different things. Uh, we can certainly, uh, argue around traffic and, and smoothing out of traffic and things are falling into better place. Um, anecdotally, I hear people talking about that. Traffic is very different this week than perhaps it was three weeks ago. Uh, maybe that's debatable, maybe not, but that certainly seems to be the reality that our drivers are experiencing. But the adjustment of routes is also something that has, uh, is an ongoing process. And we've talked about this before. I just think it's important to, um, underscore the fact that this is happening all the time. And undoubtedly has led to, um, improvements that we're seeing in terms of timing. Um, with that, uh, the reordering of routes is also, uh, a component of this, um, on, on, uh, you know, through a number of weeks now of experience under the belt, so to speak. Um, there are, uh, continual, uh, insights that Miss Ferretta has identified that, um, can, you know, whether we take a different route altogether. Uh, or with some of our routes, specifically the high school and middle school, going in one direction versus another, um, also is, uh, is advantageous for overall time. Moving stops, different buses is also ongoing, and I know some of our families certainly, uh, experienced that. Um, that is helpful in the overall efficiency, especially when you have such circumstances, for example, as one individual student at a bus stop. Um, you know, every time the bus stop, a bus has to stop. And it has to engage its lights and open the doors, um, that is seconds, and every second, of course, mounts up, um, over, uh, this, the structure that we have here in place. Um, and also, we talked about this briefly last time, but, uh, the deployment or utilization of kindergarten buses in the afternoon routes. Uh, is also an additional, um, change that is leading to improvement overall. Um, there are a lot of numbers in the slides that follow, and in no way is this meant to overwhelm or, uh, detract from, uh, the focus of these efforts. But it really is, uh, it's really with the intention to try to the minute and highlight, um, this operation. You know, um, this is, this is a massive system. We've talked about this many a times before. Um, there are a total of, uh, I mean, it's retro, Mr. DeJury, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there are a total of eighty-four. Eighty-four different individual bus, bus routes that are completed in each morning. And then again in the afternoon. It is a, it is incredible, uh, system that has multiple layers to it. But we are using the, uh, the GPS system that is, uh, that, that it's deployed on these buses by NRT. And that is what's providing us with this two-minute, um, uh, view of the, the performance, if we can use that term, of our buses. The next few slides provide you with, uh, a glimpse of, um, comparison from, and we, we picked, uh, randomly. Two different dates, we picked two different Thursdays, and for all of the comparison slides that you'll see in just a moment, uh, we, we keyed in on, you know, uh, September, I'm sorry, September the seventh. So far closer to the beginning of the school year and September the twenty-eighth last year. Um, to, uh. Put together these numbers takes a lot of time. I can appreciate that some may say, well, there must be a way to spit this out into an Excel spreadsheet. Um, there's not, uh, the data that we are gathering from North Reading Transportation is just not sophisticated enough, if you will, to be able to. Export it and download it and customize it. So, um, it is a labor to grab all of these, uh, these times, but, you know, we recognize that it's important to provide, uh, this overview. What you can see here on the left of the screen is, uh, that the September seventh date and then correspondingly the September twenty-eighth date. Certainly not going to read through all of these, but if you key on any particular bus, you can see, at least from what I believe are some significant changes, uh, from early in the school year to the last week. Comparison in early September to last week as well at the West and the Shawshank, again, sticking with the same dates of September seventh and September twenty-eight. Um, you can see, uh, the West arrival time, the Shawshank arrival time, uh, these next buses, um, are obviously, this, these next set of slides serve two schools at the same time. Um, and, uh, you can see, uh, the variety of, uh, changes there. And, and look, certainly the point of, um, and if you're tracking this daily, um, this is, uh, the reality of a system like this, just like I'm sure it's the reality of, uh. Uh, you know, public buses in the city of Boston. One particular day, there could be some event or some circumstance that leads to a slower route. Um, that, that is always at play here, uh, we're contented with that on a daily basis, but this gives you a snapshot of what the times are in comparative sense. Wilburn Street and North Intermediate, and again, we're obviously focusing here on the morning, now again, the same dates. Uh, and the respective bus routes or bus numbers that are serving these two schools. Think what is evident here particularly, and of course, we are, uh, keenly aware of the. And, and focusing on the need for getting those buses to school on time, so we're really looking at that in comparison to the nine oh five time. And as always has been the case, and I, and, and I think it's important to stress and point this out, some of the comments and feedback I've heard, um, have suggested, well, this is a. System that really should have everyone there at the exact same time and have all of the buses there at the exact same time in the afternoon. Um, this system, if you were to go back, uh, as I've had, uh, the opportunity to do over these past few weeks. And really key in, key in on these times, our system, right or wrong, for better or worse, has never functioned that way. Um, and the array of times that you see here, well, different from schools last year or the years previous, have always ranged considerably. Um, and that is absolutely evident in the data. Um, the Beltwell, um, has, uh, you can see here their comparison. Um, we don't have, uh, Wildwood included here for the simple reason that it is the very start of all of our bus routes. Uh, those buses are arriving at, or right around seven thirty for a seven forty-five start. And because they don't have any bus runs prior to, uh, to their runs, um, they're performing, um, exactly, uh, on time. This has been a struggle, uh, for sure here. You can see these times, um, and we'll talk more about one of the, uh, recommendations for an adjustment in that time a little bit later in the presentation. Um, the afternoon pickups clearly and particularly, um, uh, have been also a focus of concern. Um, and that is understood. We, we did a deeper dive, not into the high school or the middle school here, but specifically the four elementary schools that are at the latter part of our runs. Um, based upon the structure that our new transportation model includes here. Again, I know that there's a lot of information here. I'll just draw your attention to a few. Of the columns here. We have the arrival time, and again, this is all GPS data. We have the arrival time, uh, WIS is the, uh, Western Intermediate School and, uh, SS is Shawshank. So the rep, uh, the arrival time respectively for those two schools. And the last drop, what we define as the last drop is the last student to exit the bus. Um, and that data again is available through the GPS, uh, tracking system, and it knows the address, down to the address of the last student on the bus we dropped off on that particular day. And so what these graphs show, or what these tables rather show is on September seventh, um, the respective route, for example, bus eleven. Just using that as an example, it arrived to the, um, to the west at three twenty, uh, three twenty, following an arrival at Shawshank at three fourteen. And the last drop of the last student on that bus that day is three forty. You can see an adjustment that's been made here, uh, by Miss Ferretta on that particular route. Um. Now it's bus number four, it's the old eleven. The bus pickups there, Shawshank three oh five, uh, the Western Intermediate three thirteen, the last drop of the three thirty. Um, so, from, again, the, what we're looking at data-wise, we think some, some considerable improvements here overall. Again, we keyed in on the Wilburn and North as, uh, the elementary schools in this comparison of early September until, uh, last week. Sticking with again the same two dates, and you can see the data that's here. Um, obviously, this range is, uh, this range is, uh. Um, more in, in terms of, uh, deeper into the afternoon, or later in the afternoon, simply from the end time of the schools. Um, and you can see, uh, where those last drops are, uh, they range considerably, uh, certainly, uh, but these are the, the times here. Uh, we picked up a fair amount of time over a number of routes. Uh, there is no question that a couple of roads are still, uh, lagging to almost an hour after school, bus seventeen. Uh, and bus fourteen, uh, are some of the latest there. But, um, otherwise, for example, you can see what was the last drop for eighteen for bus five compared to, uh, last Thursday was four o'clock. Um, and you can see the other changes there. Also think it's, um, I think it's important as part of this conversation and just, just to put in, in terms of into context, again. Uh, the system that we, as a district, have been running for some time, and the system that we are adapting to and adjusting to as we're moving forward here. The next two slides, we took a random day. Um, I was, I was interested in this, and Miss Ferretta knew this. But I was interested in this, um, understanding again the, um, overarching concerns here. We, uh, at the Shawshank and West, um, those were under our previous, uh, school start times. Those are the last two schools to be picked up. In the last two schools, very end of the day, our latest end time. And so you can see, but I'm thinking back, for those of you that know the schools, you'll, you'll remember this well. The end time was three o'clock. I asked Miss Ferretta to pick for me a random day, so we picked May. And I was curious to see what the, um, the last drop was, what the wait time was for students. And what that total time looked like from the bell, or we call the bell, or la- official end of the school day, um, until a student, uh, last student got home. Again, I, you know, I apologize, there's a lot of numbers here. This just seems to be the best way to display this. Um, again, the range is great, um, uh, all across the board. Uh, and this wasn't a unique day. This was reflective of a typical day. Um, and you can see that in some cases, there were students that were getting home twenty-six minutes after the bell or the last, uh, time of the day. Uh, and a couple of buses, uh, were later fifty-three minutes, um, thirty-six, thirty-four minutes. Um, Miss Ferretta can speak to this certainly more than I, but I had seen these times and these resemble, uh, what was the norm of operating under our, our previous system. We also took a glimpse of this at the North and Wilburn. Of course, recognizing here quite a significantly different end time of the day at two twenty-five. Um, but you can see here, again, on the same exact day, then we were trying to be consistent in our, in our exploration of the data. What you can see here again is the last drop, again defined as when that last student on that bus on that day was dropped off at their, uh, at their stop. And you can see the range here. Um, total time, uh, from that bell to home range from, you know, uh, thirty minutes. Uh, upwards of forty-four minutes. I think there's a quick glimpse here. The total student waiting time at school, uh, obviously also worth noting, and I, I recognize well that this has been a source of great concern for, uh, some of the students and some of these buses. Um, there's no question that, um, overall, we had fewer students waiting longer. But we also had some routes taking, uh, a good amount of time too. So the total time home from the bell, uh, to home, um, I think actually mirrors somewhat closer. Uh, not exactly, but somewhat closer to what some of those times are, uh, currently. Granted, of course, the day, the, the, the time of day is, is significantly longer. So ongoing improvements, um, that's the heart of this. It's not to be, uh, trying to overwhelm anyone or be deceptive with data, but we're looking at this data. We're looking at this data to try and track what the improvements are of the system overall. Um, and, uh, we, we have, uh, some next steps here for the school committee's consideration to try and continue our efforts of improving, uh, this system. And bringing it about closer to resembling the type of system that we've operated in the past. So the first is, uh, a proposal or recommendation here for your consideration to adjust start times. It is not lost upon me that this is not an insignificant request. Uh, whether it be a couple of minutes, or whether it be ten minutes, it is a change. And it is, uh, not something that, um, I would have ever imagined when we started the year, or when we requested, um. You know, this, this, uh, this change back in the winter of last year that we would have to do. But we, um, we, we're struggling in some senses here, and we need to make, uh, we need to make some adjustments, and we think that the adjustment of Shawshank and West by ten minutes later, uh, will be helpful. Should you, uh, should you be inclined to approve that change? And again, the, the start times, um, fall to you by school committee policy. Um, then my proposal would be that we make that adjustment effective Monday, October sixteenth. Secondary, the change, uh, requested here is the Beltwell, and shifting that five minutes later, uh, then that would be the same, uh, time, uh, going to effective to the October sixteenth. We talked at the last meeting about adding a bus, um, and we, uh, uh, we remain on course with the, uh, firm. Uh, firm understanding that that would, uh, provide additional capacity, uh, to, uh, contend with some of the routes that are struggling a little bit more than others. You can see that in the data. Uh, there's, there's no question that some are taking a little bit longer than others. Uh, and we want to target those routes to improve those, um, route times. So, um, I can actually tell you, uh, that that bus has arrived here in Wilmington. Uh, it is literally on site. Uh, I cannot tell you, uh, when, uh, NRT, North Reading Transportation will have a driver for us, but that bus has arrived, and it is here, uh, in Wilmington. Um, and, uh, in step three. We want to continue to analyze the impact of both the additional bus as well as the adjustments in start times. We have continuously taken a look at a possibility of adjusting, uh, the high school start time that remains, uh, an area of focus. But, um, after much conversation with Miss Ferretta and Miss DeJury, we want to fold off on that right now and making that request. Until we see these adjustments and these additional steps that take hold. Um, here's, uh, the next couple of slices provide an overview of what exactly the impact should you approve these changes be across the board. It has been broken down, uh, according to school, what the impact is specifically, um, and what the impact is, if any, on the other schools across the board. And that's for Beltwell. This is for Shawshank and West. And then the additional bus, a little bit more text here to take in, but, um, the impact here on the Beltwell. Uh, will assist the drivers, uh, to complete those Beltwell routes, um, uh, quicker. Uh, there's no impact specifically in the PM, but we're targeting that AM time, which we know we are struggling with, with a couple of buses. Shawshank and West, you can see there's no planned impact in the AM of the morning, but in the, uh, in the afternoon, uh, that additional bus will provide, uh, capacity for the afternoon rides. You can see correspondingly, if you're in high school or middle school, what this bus, um. We believe will provide in the, in the, in the. Miss Ferretta certainly can speak to, uh, any of that if you have additional questions. Um, there certainly was, uh, and understandably so, an interest in, well, if we're going to go down this path of adding a bus. Uh, knowing that we operate the system without, um, any user fees, uh, that means, um, by, by default that that falls to the budget of the school department. Um, and what does that look like? Here's our budget for the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, this is always made, um. Uh, widely available as part of our budget building plan, so this is not, uh, a number that, um, certainly anyone following the budget would not have seen before. As you, as you know, we operate currently with sixteen buses, and that total, uh, amount, uh, is, uh, a little over a million dollars, one point one million dollars, to be specific. Each bus costs, for those that are interested, four hundred and sixteen dollars per day. Or for each bus approximately seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, and again, that's through, uh, uh, a service that we're paying for North Reading Transportation. These are obviously very significant dollars. The impact of adding a bus, um, from a fiscal standpoint, uh, would be, and Mr. DeJury can, shall we speak more to this if any members have questions. Um, but our proposal, uh, would be to utilize savings that we have with replacement staff. Uh, from those that have retired or resigned after the twenty-four budget was finalized. Um, and in addition to that, certainly. From, uh, from the district leadership standpoint, we will require, uh, justification for discretionary spending, uh, if or as those requests come forward. Um, let's talk a little bit more about the, the, the high school start time here captured on this slide. As I mentioned though, uh, we want to, we want to wait just a little bit more on this. Uh, I talked to Mr. Gendron about this, and he's understanding that this is something that could materialize, but we're not going down that path, um, at that, anytime, at this point in time. During our last meeting, there was some discussion and some public comment around morning supervision, uh, and I do want to talk about this for just a moment. Um, you know, I, I can appreciate the fact that some, uh, members of our community might wonder why it, you know, why it may be that we can't have, uh, supervision. Uh, as, uh, inside of school for, you know, an extensive period of time before morning arrival. Um, it is a staffing issue, and, uh, and as a part of that, it's a contractual issue. Um, and so we do have to obviously. Work with and, uh, honor those respective contracts. Uh, we have staff that are available ten minutes before the official start of school. Um, we are working to implement a plan such that, in, in a couple of these models, you may see if you dug, dug into the times, it's some buses, not many. Some buses are arriving closer to the fifteen-minute mark before the start of school. And obviously, we recognize well that if we're going to hold those buses until ten minutes. And not allow students to be unloaded until that point in time, that, that will, uh, certainly impede or impact their ability to get onto the next route. Um, and so we are, uh, at a place of being able to support through, uh, traditional staffing, additional supervision, um. Through stipending fifteen minutes drop-off for those buses that are, are arriving at that point in time. The high school is an exception to that. That's simply given the age of students. Um, but, um, I think that that's, that's an important piece to, to note. Um, our commitment going forward, we recognize here a couple of things. We recognize that there is a high level of interest in terms of how the system overall is operating. Um, and, and that's understood. We've had, as you know, recently made available, uh, through a partnership and, um, some additional expense to the district. Uh, a partnership by bringing online this app called Where's My Kid? Uh, wish it weren't called that, but we, that's, we, we didn't name it. That's, doesn't seem like. Uh, the, the best term for it, but that's the app. It's a third-party app that is, um, drawing the GPS data. Uh, that is placed on these buses by North Reading Transportation, our bus provider. Um, we launched that earlier this week. Uh, it's our understanding that there maybe, may have been some unfortunate, uh, technical glitches with that. Miss Ferretta has. I think some more information that she may wish to share this evening about that. But all of that being said, um, I understand as superintendent that there certainly is a high level of interest of what this overall system is performing like, what are the times look like? And so, uh, what I want to share with, uh, you and the community this evening is our plan going forward. That over the months of October and November, we will, uh, and again, this is a manual process, but recognizing where we are at with this system. We will, uh, gather and upload to the website, the AM and PM arrival for all of our buses. For all of our schools and all of our routes over the course of the next couple of months. We have some changes that are going to be, um, hopefully, um. Inserted here in terms of the system. This will continue to lead to some, uh, further adjustments. And again, I recognize that there's an interest in, in how that all plays out and what are the times looking like. Um, I do not think that it, it has, uh, purpose, um, or put honestly a lot of value to keep that going throughout the entire school year. If we are still, if there's still a desire by the committee to have that extend past November, I certainly welcome those thoughts, but, uh, right now, the thought is for October and November. To, um, to be committed to making that data available. Now, why the delay, one might ask? Again, it's, it's, it's a laborious process, takes a lot of time. Um, because we just don't have the ability to upload that in real time. Um, I mentioned at the outset, the final piece here, I think it's important to, uh, talk about, um. You know, this is a service that is a non-essential service for, uh, for students. Um, but that said, it's a service that our district has. Um, and our, and our district has committed to providing for our students and our families in this community for, not sure how long, but for some time. But it, it's also, there's no question about the fact that this is an immense financial resource, um, that we, we budget for. Uh, we talked certainly last year about the fact that we know that other districts charge a, uh, fee of some sort. Not in all, but many circumstances to offset that cost. Um, but our district has, uh, found itself in a place where we've absorbed all of these costs. Um, but going forward, um, it really seems to us that there are, are short-term. Uh, midterm, intermediate, and longer-term planning needs for this, uh, for this overall operation. Short-term, we've, uh, we believe that we've characterized these, or we've characterized these as the start time changes, the proposals and the additional bus. Um the intermediate uh that high school possibility, the high school start time change. But I do strongly uh believe that we need to also focus on longer-term planning. Uh to design this system, to align with what the goals and priorities are of our committee. Uh going forward. Uh this is uh there is a school committee policy, as as you know, on this. Um I think it's important to review that in the coming uh weeks and months, does that? Does that reflect our operations currently? What do we want in terms of uh a level of service? Um and and uh certainly importantly with that, is there a gap between the desired level of service and what we can provide? And I I I think I may be using this term more and more of level of service, but simply what I mean by that is. Um how long do we ride, want uh bus rides to be for students? Uh and you know, and and what time do we want them there in the morning? Um and everything in between. Uh so short-term planning, uh this is what we think uh we're we're contending with here, intermediate planning. Um as mentioned, high school start time change and level of service. And then that longer-term planning. And again, very squarely um very squarely uh confronting this as we move forward in the budget season is. Uh this, certainly we know the interest of, well, we should just add more buses. We should just add more buses and that will help. There's no question that more buses will help. There's also no question that um should we continue with the financial model that we have in place right now? Uh this is uh or holds the potential to be a considerable cost for our district. Um and serving as a competing interest for other resources that we may need to um to move the system forward. So I know that that's a lot of information, again, those that may be joining, um this full presentation is uh available online. Uh with all of that, uh Spretra, Mr. Zeror, myself are happy to take any questions, but memories of everyone else.
All right, questions, comments from the committee? Uh Mr. McCalli.
Cool. All right, thank you. Uh so. Thanks for the updated presentation. I I found it very helpful to kind of see all the data and kind of the plan a little bit more clearly laid out. So it helped me better conceptualize it a little bit more. So I do have a few questions, but I I just kind of want to share my thoughts with the the committee and um. Those listening in a little bit before I go into my questions, so. Wh- when I was looking at this data and thinking about it. I I really noticed that the core structure of our district, all the di- different schools, eight to nine different schools. It really places an incredible burden on the system. In that you have to do all these rapid change rounds. And I actually looked into other school districts around some of our neighbors, see how many buses they run, how many schools they operate. And um not a not a lot of towns have the same amount of schools as we do, and if they do, they do have a lot more buses, right? And I think it's been incredible, we've been able to kind of make this work over the years. But I think with the twenty-minute longer time, anything that worked in the past may not be tenable going forward, so I think. With these issues we're seeing presents, I think, a really great opportunity for us to kind of take a step back. And really rethink what we want as a community out of our bus system and how we want it to operate. So I think this plan was really a good start in the right direction. And I think it also uh is something that, as you acknowledge, we need to kind of work on a little bit more. In the longer term and really think about what can we do to make this work for the next few years? Before we actually start getting more buildings online that consolidate the schools, which would make this a lot easier. So we need to really focus on the consolidation part, that's an aside. Uh and as you mentioned too, I think this is great that we're talking about this now because uh with long-term planning. Because now we're going to start talking about financial budget planning soon, right? And we're going to start working with the town on that. And I think this is a great time to start those conversations to really see. What is that future vision we have as a committee and also with our community members? Of what level of service we want and how we want it to serve us all, the district. So to that, just a few questions I have. Um and. There there's a few, so anyone in the committee who wants to interrupt me, let me know. There's just a little bit more clarifying questions for me, I think I understood them, but. Thank for the benefit of the community, maybe it'd be good to clarify that more. So um starting with the data review, are are the routes in the morning for the middle school and high school more problematic than others? So like, I I kind of see one through four. Wh- what's specifically deep being done for routes one through four right now in order to try to get those a little bit more on time?
So in regard to buses one through four, um I'm at a point where I can no longer make those adjustments. Um we're a little bit out of standstill, so I'm waiting for another bus. Um any adjustments at this point is going to impact others in some way, shape or form. Um negatively, and I I certainly don't want to. You know, give to one and have to take from another. Um so we are waiting for the additional bus. When the additional bus comes, he will specifically focus on assisting kindergarten in those middle school, high school routes. Um for the elementary schools, if we're seeing a bus run delayed, it's not really consistently delayed, it's having a bad day. Um but we still need to correct those, but those those can be corrected and will be corrected easily, but the kindergarten buses. Um for the high school and middle school, those drivers, unfortunately, we do have to wait for the additional vehicle. Um this is something regardless of start time changes. We would have struggled with even in last year's model with the added time on learning to the K, to the kindergarten buildings. Um basically adding that fifteen minutes, but only five at the high school. You know, as you can see in all of the data, we're only off by five to ten minutes, and that's where that five to ten minutes is. Um so unfortunately, we're a little bit um. We're at a point where we we're struggling to correct, there's not much else I can do. Um. I think we have an adjustment for four coming um next week. That will put her five minutes before the bell rings at both schools. Uh but we're still got to work on buses two and three, um and they will need the support of the additional vehicle.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, with the additional vehicle. You'll be able to get buses two and three and one would start to be able to come online because you would reshuffle the routes a little bit better?
Yeah, so one's going to be a little bit tricky, one is consistently on time every day, but it's at the bell ring for the middle school. So that one is still going to be a little bit tricky to correct. Um but I do think we can, we can get there, but two and three will most certainly be be adjusted.
Okay, thanks. Then to uh follow on for the afternoon. Um are there routes in the afternoon at Woburn Street in the north that are more problematic than others? I kind of saw maybe like bus seventeen seemed to be coming in a little late, right? So.
Yeah, so.
What can be done? So same question, wh- what are you thinking, what are you doing right now to try and improve those routes and? What in this way do you think will alleviate that?
So again, we're at a standstill, um waiting for an additional bus. Um I I I don't want to hurt somebody to help somebody else, I I don't want to go that road. And then when we get back, when we get that additional bus, we're going to be switching things up again. Um so I'm kind of just holding off. As Dr. Brand stated, the bus is on property. Um I will be building that bus's route next week. Um and we are hoping to start it a week early, fingers crossed. Um we are hoping to start it a week early, and and the biggest impacts in the afternoon, you're going to see with that vehicle. Um so once the Shawshing time pushes up. We don't really have any buses running considerably late there, um and most students are home within a half hour from three o'clock. So we'll be in really great shape over there. Um naturally, we do have a couple routes run later, um but it's not significant by any means. Um we do have one long route over there, the new bus will be used on that particular route. Freeing up that driver to go directly to the north in Woburn because he's arriving late to the Shawshing West now, so he'll go directly and report over to the north in Woburn. Um at the north in Woburn, we're going to combine two routes over there. Um we've got space, one of the routes has already had students shuffled off and placed on to some of the quicker buses. So we have one bus operating, which is twenty students onboard. Um so we're going to combine that bus. And then um we will also be able to combine another bus over on the Shawshing West side, again freeing up another driver to head over to the north in Woburn. Um so we will be trimming down three of our longest routes over at the north and Woburn side, so we'll see corrections. To thirteen, fourteen and seventeen mainly. Um and the new bus will assist on some of the other routes that aren't quite so extended. But um we'll trim off a little bit of their routes earlier off so they can get to those schools quicker.
Okay, great.
I'm gonna go to Mr. I'm gonna go to Mr. Turner now, who uh had to say.
Thank you. Um first of all, thank you very much for all the information and data and and certainly a clear improvement um from where where we were to where we are. The main question I have is in terms of the morning supervision piece. Um is there an idea on the timing of when that could be affected? And also, um I know. Um there's an upper limit to this, but is fifteen minutes as opposed to ten enough? There might be some cases where a bus gets there, because there's some of the ones at Shawshing and West, you're getting there. At at enough time where fifteen is still, they're going to be waiting there for a few minutes for that door to open. So is there some consideration towards twenty minutes for having staffing available? As opposed to fifteen, and then the other piece of it is 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 the timing piece of when that might be available?
Uh sure, I'll take that, Mr. Turner, thank you. Um yeah, so you know, our uh we're we are working closely with our principals to bring into um. Bring on to the scene, so to speak, the supervision. I think in most, if not all, um uh of of our uh schools, again, not including the high school in this conversation. Um that they have already, some staff would step forward to uh to volunteer. You know, the 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 reality for, I mean, it's just another logistical challenge of many that we face, and I appreciate that, you know, the eight schools, that's certainly one. One of the additional challenges for um, in my opinion, almost all of our schools is we don't have a natural. Uh we don't have a natural area to be able to drop students off safely. Right? If you think about it, if you know all of our schools, most have very limited outdoor spaces. Um that's not always the case, and so from a supervision standpoint, there is a concern there. We and we and it's certainly, um it's also not simple to. Uh some I know have asked, well, can't you just open the doors and and have students go into the buildings? You also have to keep in mind that in a lot of our elementary, most of our elementary schools, we have um. Uh a very large contingent of care students that are in there. And that they're using some spaces, so there's a lot that's happening in the morning, um but where that supervision is on board. And I think that that's already happened, I mean, Ms. Brecher knows better than I right this moment, but. That's already happening in um many of the schools right now for the for the drop-offs. Um I'm very, I'm confident that we will have this across the board. Uh including at the middle school, in fact, Dr. Burke about that, and in fact, our elementary principals, so. They know that this is going to be a helpful facet for improving our timing here. Um and so um we will, we will have this in place.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll go back to Mr. McCalli.
Sure, thanks. Uh so just another clarification question. With the change proposed for the Shawshing and Beltwell. From what I understand, the bus times are not changing, it's just more the start times are reflecting the reality of when the bus is getting there? I- am I right in that interpretation?
So that's correct for the Shawshing West, um and I'm sorry, did you say the Beltwell as well?
Yeah, and the Beltwell.
Um no, the five minutes isn't quite reflecting what the buses are doing, we still need to improve the buses on that one. Um which the additional bus will help them do, because it's going to alleviate some of their high school, middle schools that they're. They're a little bit late on. Um so when we can correct that, we can get those routes started earlier for the Beltwell. Um it's just to assist, because right now we're looking, I think, at the Beltwell, the latest bus is coming in about eleven minutes. Late and we, that's that's a considerable swing in time that we really need to um. You know, work with, it's it's eleven minutes is is a lot for me. Uh five minutes I can play with, eleven's tough, so um bumping that start time just helps me get back in my wheelhouse, so to speak. Um so I can make the adjustments and get in getting good range there.
That makes sense, it it just just to be clear. Um obviously, if there's a bus route change, times will change, but the people riding buses, the students riding buses now, their bus times won't change, it's just. More the start times and the end times will change, right?
Yes, for the Shawshing West, the bus routes aren't going to change at all. Um but well, we are going to see earlier pickups than what they have experienced. Um and not enormously considerable, but you know, expect five to ten minutes.
Okay. All right, then my my last question, sorry, I have all tons of questions. Uh so I, the high school idea is intriguing. Um and you know, I was thinking about it, five minutes does not sound like a ton of time. But I was thinking, you know, it all adds up, it trickles down, right? So is with the high school adjustment, the benefit more going to be realized through traffic flow? Where all the buses go to high school, go through that really tough intersection of sixty-two and one-twenty-nine? Um in a more traffic favorable manner, so then they can get to the middle school instead of right now where a lot of buses are at the middle school? And then getting stuck at that light for a long time, i- i- is that the idea behind it?
Um we're actually, you know, we have drivers deviating and going different routes to the high school. Um. It's more so to help the buses that are starting at the high school, because they're already running five minutes behind because of that time difference. They start five minutes later from the middle school. So the vehicles that are starting at the high school first. And heading over the middle school will instantly see five minutes come off of all of their times in the afternoon, arriving to the elementary schools. Um and five minutes is is considerable, I mean, we have buses. You know, it it makes a difference, so um you know, that's going to alleviate. Not, it's not going to cure our afternoon problems by any means, but it's certainly going to improve upon them. So aligning that together is just going to make the afternoon go a little bit faster.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Other questions and comments, Dr. Bryson?
Hi, thanks. Um I have, Lisa, I'm just trying to understand, in particular, bus one and five. The middle school, high school. And I'm trying to, and I, what I heard you say was, you've done everything you can for one, is that, is that accurate?
Yes, one will be tough to additionally fix, we are seeing that bus come in anywhere from. Eight o'clock to eight oh five right now consistently, the data that you see on the spreadsheet was from September twenty-eighth, but we've made further adjustments. Um so but that is consistently arriving to the high school at seven fifty-five. And getting to the middle school between eight o'clock and eight oh five. So maybe a couple of minutes before at the high school.
And so some of the buses go to the middle school first and then go to the high school, and some go to the high school and then go to the middle school. And so can you just explain bus one? So bus one, I've been looking at the data, that seems to be the most problematic, I see bus five. As well, but bus one seems to be sort of the the trickiest one, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Um for the high school, middle.
For the middle school, for the middle school drop-off.
Okay, yeah, and five has, um I'm sorry, five has been corrected, there shouldn't be any delays on five anymore, five's arriving to all schools on time now.
Okay.
I think it had a little hiccup today at the Shawshing West, but for the most part, it's it's. Arriving very well at all of our schools, um students arriving five minutes before bell time. Um one has been corrected, um so that one is arriving to the high school about seven fifty-three, seven fifty-four. And it's arriving at the middle school between usually typically eight oh one to eight oh five. Um that is going to be a tougher one to fix, it's a very small route. Just services essentially two roads right next to the high school and heads back out. Um so it it is going to be a tougher one to fix. Within any additional adjustments, but we are seeing a lot of traffic relieving. Um I think people are utilizing the buses again, things are moving faster, so.
Okay, and so it's just, and just to clarify, so steps one and two. Aren't necessarily going to impact that particular situation?
Um steps running, steps for bus one?
For bus one.
Um no, I mean, we might be able to have the second bus at. The additional bus assist a little bit, but I mean, realistically speaking, that that one's going to be a tough one to fix.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have another one, David, but I'll wait and see if someone else needs to.
Going once, going twice, Dr. Bryson, you're up again.
Great. Um to the staffing issue, I know um Stephen already asked about this, but what do we need? To supervise the cafeteria, can you just explain that to us? So what do we, how many people do we need in there? What does that look like?
Well, it 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 really depends on uh a couple of things, first off, how many buses, we're talking about total, so it may depend on one, from one. One school to the next, the other reality is also car riders, right? And so when you start to open up doors, we certainly wouldn't be able to find ourselves in a place where. We would just be allowing bus students to enter um and not car riders. There can be dozens and dozens and dozens of car riders. Leading to in a particular cafeteria pretty quickly, depending on the school, depending on the school, uh well over a hundred. well over a hundred students. So there, there becomes a lot of students very quickly. And, and, and so these buses, right, it, it really depends on the school and those drop offs. So if you think about that for a moment, just let's just take a, an elementary school. We have some elementary schools that are operating with fifty, sixty, seventy care students. Maybe not that many in all, probably can speak more to this, but you've got care students in cafeteria and then you're loading them up hypothetically with fifty, sixty, eighty quickly, a hundred student bus. So it becomes easily, there could be more students than a lunch in there. But that becomes also right, the concern for supervision. The high, the middle school, sorry, a little bit different, obviously, it's a bigger space. But again, if we are, my understanding is on any given day, there can be, there can be sixty car riders, seventy car riders. That's my understanding, secondhand information, not observation. You, you, you add into there students who are arriving on these buses quickly, that can exceed what we're operating lunches with. So it's more than one person supervising at a time. Certainly, that's the reality. And we need staff outside as well, too.
Thank you. And then just to review, we are going to have the idea, can you just review that timeline again for when there will be staffing available?
Staffing is available now, as I understand it, from our principals in many of the schools. I can't, can't tell you if there's a particular school right now that does not yet have that in place. We have our principals who are, or assistant principals who are also, I should point out, doing this. I mean, this is, but it's an additional tax, of course, on, on them. They're getting ready for the day as always have, you know, substitutes if it's in the morning or, or after school. So, I mean, be clear, we, the after school piece, we have supervision across the board supervising students. This, this pushing on the morning drop off and facilitating the ability for students to be unloaded if they're there up to fifteen minutes. That's what we're putting into place for these additional pieces. And my understanding is we have them at most, if not all of our schools now.
Thank you.
Mr. Smaha?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I have one question, I just wanted to clarify just something. So the, it was sort of like the immediate term thing that, that we're going to be, that we're being asked to do tonight, right? Is to adjust the Boutwell school start time. And the hopeful potential impact is that's going to help the morning bus arrival time. We're going to consider increasing the Shawshank and the West start time by ten minutes. And that too will, will help the, the AM bus arrival at that school. The additional, and then the third thing immediate is adding the additional bus. That will also help the AM Boutwell. And then that will impact the high school, the middle school. And be the bigger change for both the morning and the afternoon for Woburn and North. Am I correct in saying, in saying that? So. Yes, okay.
Sorry, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
This, this start time changes are strictly just to assist us a little bit, so we're not having to add an atrocious amount of vehicles. It kind of essentially just takes care of the Shawshank all by itself because this is what the buses are already doing. And staff will be present in the afternoon and the kids will board buses quickly. The additional vehicle will make the biggest impact over on the north and Woburn side in the afternoons. And with the high school, middle school in the morning. Even some of our north and Woburn Street routes, most of them are running on time in the morning, but if we have one that's close, we'll divide that up and, and get those kids to school five minutes before the bell rings.
Okay, and a, a quick follow up. If we, if, if we adjust the Shawshank and the West by ten minutes later, will that have a negative impact on the north side of town? Like, so if we're, if those buses are now running, well, the buses are kind of running the way they are now, right? So if we're adjusting the start time, we're actually adjusting for what they kind of are doing now. So by adjusting this Shawshank and West start times, we're kind of adjusting the school start to where the buses are. So we don't envision any negative impact on other schools later on in the day. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. And you know, the biggest thing with that start time change that I've been projecting is we do need staff supervision because the Shawshank bumps up later does not mean we can take students off the bus later. Because that will have a negative impact on the north and Woburn side. So students will still be releasing, coming off the buses at about eight twenty-five, and it's not every bus. It's not like all, all the buses are unloading at that time. They are still trickling in. Many will be in the ten, five to ten minute range. But it is to, you know, we'll line it up, we'll get the kids off the bus and there'll be no impact on the north and Woburn side.
Okay, could I just, I mean, one more question. For this additional coverage, Dr. Brand, that we're considering, is this, is this a, we're going to be paying people to come in earlier? Is that, is that correct? Because I'm worried about the, you know, perhaps the contractual impacts of this.
Where it's necessary to do so, yes, where we have the ability to adjust some schedules, we will do so. But for the vast majority of circumstances, it will be additional compensation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Turner and then Mr. Fenley.
Thank you. So a quick one on, going back to the, the staff, the extra staffing time, I think to fully realize the benefit of the proposal on Shawshank and West and not impact Woburn Street and North. It would need for those two schools only to be twenty minutes and not fifteen. So when I look at the numbers now, there are buses getting to either one of those two schools close to eight twenty. And so if we say it's eight twenty-five, which would be fifteen minutes from the proposal, they'd have to sit. And so I, I, I'd hate to not get the full benefit or have a potential impact fall because we haven't done that. And so I understand that the other schools, maybe fifteen minutes is enough. But perhaps with those two alone, we need to, to go for, to, to aim for twenty just to make sure we don't lose some of the benefit of the proposed change. I, I wouldn't want that change to then trickle down hill.
Mr. Fenley?
Thank you. So I, I appreciate the, the conversation and I, I want to just switch gears a tiny bit. And maybe a request. You know, we're talking a lot about sort of these, I think we're calling them short term and even, you know, intermediate term solutions, which I recognize, right? We're, we're addressing what's in front of us. But if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, what I'm hearing us say is that potentially adding one bus and making some, some minor changes to some start time is sort of sort of the end of what we can do right now, which I appreciate. And, you know, I've been pretty clear in my support for adding another bus. I think I've been clear in my support for adding other buses as we start talking about what those long-term fixes look like. What I'm not hearing us say, and, and, and what I'm asking is that at some point, we need to identify what that looks like, right? And I know, right, those things come with time, but Paul, check my math if I'm wrong. I apologize, but assuming we add one additional bus, our transportation, the transportation cost next year is going to be one point three million, a little bit more than that. If we were to add four buses, which twenty is the number we've kind of kicked around in some of these meetings, we're looking at a little over one point five million. So this is not an insignificant cost, and I recognize that. What I am hoping we are, we're able to put together at some point is what that magic number is. How many buses do we need to achieve the goals X, Y, and Z? Is it everybody's at school fifteen minutes early and only waits ten minutes or home by, whatever it is? I, I, you know, I'm looking, I'm looking to identify those. And so I appreciate the work that's been done and I'm, I'm eager, I think, to sort of, not switch gears, not discount what we're doing, but to, to have those conversations as well. And then separately to that point, we've talked a bit in this meeting and in previous meetings about reviewing and redoing if necessary, the transportation policy. And so Lisa, I won't put you on the spot. You probably don't have this information handy, but I'm going to ask if you could get it, you know, maybe not by the next meeting, but you know, the policy as it's written right now says students in first, eighth grade can be on the buses if they live within a mile and a half. Ninth through twelfth, I think it's two miles. I'll check that. I could be wrong, but I'm wondering how closely we adhere to that. And maybe there's ten students and it doesn't make a huge impact, and maybe it's a hundred students and it's, so I just want to make sure that we're getting all of the information to then sort of build out those longer term goals.
Yes, we've been speaking about putting a committee together for longer term goals consisting of parents and staff and all that. Currently, we are not following any of the policies. We transport almost everybody. I mean, they're literally steps away if we're not. So everybody is being transported. For the most part, stops have remained the same. We have cut back on a couple. But those students are facing usually one tenth of a mile walk. So nothing significant. I want to say average walk for any student to a bus stop is about one tenth of a mile. The second largest group would be two tenths, and we have very few students walking any further than that.
Sorry, thank you.
I have a few comments and then a few questions as well. One is that I want to go back very quickly to something that Dr. Brand said in the presentation, just because I think it maybe needs a little clarification. One of the things, Dr. Brand, you mentioned was that you said that transportation is a, a non-essential service. And I, I think that essentially what we're saying by that is not that it's not essential or important, but that it's not a required service. It's just a simply statement of fact that districts are not required to provide transportation to their students and not all districts do. But obviously, obviously, our presence here is not because this is not an essential topic. But I just wanted to kind of clarify, clarify just that, that little bit of wording around, around that point.
Thank you. Perhaps a poor choice of wording, but you're right. What I meant to convey was exactly that, that you know, unlike so many other aspects of this public school districts operations, where there are absolutely requirements and mandates to offer an array of services. Student transportation is not, is not one. Hence why oftentimes, not always, not always, but oftentimes we'll see districts who do opt to go in that direction will, you know, incorporate a user. It's not, it's not like some of the other services have to be. Thanks for the clarification.
Second, I want to look at, you know, a, a few years down the road and, you know, we have this, we have our MSBA project. And we are going to be, we are in fact required to look at three different possibilities. One is just sort of basically a Wildwood replacement. Another is a consolidation to essentially pre-K three or a consolidation pre-K five. And I just kind of want to put out there into the, you know, sort of the minds of our town residents that the town is going to have to eventually, you know, receive a recommendation and, you know, support one of these potential options. And that I think that the, you know, the earlier that we are thinking about the benefits of consolidation, the better. And one of the main benefits of, for example, going even from eight schools to seven, but certainly going from eight to six is going to be in the area of transportation. And I know that that's years away. But there are some decisions that will have to be made that are coming down a lot closer before, before any new building opens. And so I think that that's something that I do want to put forward. That transportation is in fact one of the main arguments for consolidation. There are many of them, but, but that is certainly a key one. Third, and this is not something that we've discussed here, and I, but I, I do still hear it around town and in some of the emails we receive and comments and so forth. And so I, I, I just feel that, that I, I want to state again that one option that we simply don't have is reverting back to our prior start times this year. It is simply not something that we can do. This is why we made the decision, and I think it was January last year, and that was with seven months lead notice. And I don't think anyone there thought it was too much. Even that was maybe, you know, if anything on the, on the line. It, it takes just absolute months and months for people to be able to arrange their work schedules, their childcare schedules, like, you know, they're all of the logistics of their lives. And most especially for our staff, so that, you know, knowing that this change was coming, you know, our staff has completely rearranged how their lives work in terms of when they're available and unavailable to, you know, be at work and to, you know, do child pickups and, and so forth for their, not just their jobs, but for their own families. And we, we, we simply cannot make a reversion back to the old system. You know, anytime this year, it takes again, much, much, much longer lead time and notice to make those, to make those kinds of changes, which is why we're looking at what we are looking at. Dr. Brand, you, please, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to add on to that, Mr. I still, if I could, and, and that is again, just to stress, it was mentioned earlier this evening, and I, and I understand many who also have shared that thought, but you know, I, I do think it's important again to point out that this, the reverting back to our old system and array of structure of times is, is not even an option, period, because of the intentionality that we took and this committee took to add instructional time to our elementary schools in particular. In other words, and we've talked about this, the system, the transportation system and the, the route times and so on that we, for however many years our district has been operating with, would, would not have been able to continue the same this year. Even if it, we didn't change start time, but we added this instructional time. And as you know, when we talked about considerably, we felt obligated to do that when we, when we understood that we, we were behind in terms of time on learning, particularly for our younger students. And that was a very deliberate decision. So we would have had to not necessarily blow up the whole transportation system, but certainly had to make some significant adjustments because what we were operating with could not have remained the same with that additional time.
Thank you for that point. I want to ask two questions and, and then I want to take it from there and then I'll surrender to other people. The first one has to do with communication. So this is something that we have talked about in prior meetings. We talked about it last week. And I didn't hear anything really about that in the presentation today. And so I'd, I'd just like to know kind of what the thoughts are and what the conversations have been about improving our communication with parents because I, you know, I, I think it's, it's such a crucial aspect of it. And, you know, so, so many of the, of the issues can be obviously not, not overcome, but, but, you know, improved if people simply have good communication about what's happening and, you know, when their kids are getting picked up in the morning and when the buses are running late and so forth. So can, can you speak a little bit about what our thoughts are about improving our communication efforts?
I, I'll start and certainly if Brett, if you want to add in. So the, the launch of that app is real-time data understood. And Lisa, maybe you can add to this piece here. We'll start here with this. This is a a new endeavor that we, we recently learned about that other districts, I don't think many. I don't think many at all, but other districts are providing for families. It's that, it's that app that links to the GPS system on buses. That was, oh, you know, launched this week with our elementary students, as, as I've been stressing the communication. It's not something we control or oversee or manage, but it's something that we absolutely support because we recognize that it's just good data to have. Lisa, if you want to add anything in terms of the, the app that we, we've introduced.
Yeah, so we, we started the app on Monday. I certainly don't believe it was a smooth rollout for everybody. We have some hiccups. But I've been working closely with NRT. They even had a meeting on it yesterday. A couple of bugs were worked out. So I will be touching back with families I've heard from earlier in the week that were having issues. We have our own support system, an individual just dedicated to that app and Wilmington. So he will be answering the support questions that come in from families via the app, and I will be able to work directly with him in regards to loading additional students. As soon as I see a week of, you know, a lot of positive feedback and, and this is working properly with families, I will roll in adding it for the kindergarten and also the middle school and high school. Ideally, I would like to wait until the new bus rolls in and we have those routes established. Just. Uh, just, you know, up and going and and hopefully by the end of the month, we have it for the rest of the community.
Alright, you anticipated my next question, which is about the rollout for when that was going to expand to.
Yeah.
Uh to secondary students and to uh kindergarten. Uh I would uh I'll get to um Mr. Smile in a moment here. I'll just um finish up at the right now. I think that I'm glad that we have the um that we have the app and hopefully it will, you know, smooth, things will smooth out. Um because it hasn't been working for everyone. Uh but I think that I think that's not enough and that. Um, you know, we can't just throw our communication efforts onto uh onto, you know, a a phone app and uh there there enough. Even if it worked flawlessly, I don't think that that would be sufficient. I think that we need to take a little bit more ownership of our, some of our communication efforts. Um and be be thinking beyond that, even a smoothly working app will will solve all of our problems in that area. Uh Mr. Smaha.
Thank you. Um. One of one of the concerns that I I wanted to to bring up, I don't think really has been talked about, but I think it goes a little bit back to what Mr. Turner was mentioning about. Um supervision. One of the um concerns that I have about adjusting school start times. For if, you know, for the Boutwell and for the the Shawshin in the West is the impact that that might have on. Families who are do car rider and they've figured out their schedule to a point where that ten minutes is gonna make. Uh a a huge difference, right? Where they're, they've got the drop off at this school, the drop off at this school, and then they can. Get on the highway, but you know, by this time and, you know, somebody drives into Boston every day. You know, ten minutes is is a is a is a huge amount of time um. For for, you know, traffic wise. So I I I think that. It would be beneficial for us to really consider that. Having that earlier supervision time so that a family who would be, if we decide to go forward with this ten minutes. Adjustment that when students, so a student can be dropped off at the same time now as in when. We adjust by ten minutes by adding more supervised time at the beginning uh of the day at those schools in particular. I don't know. I don't know how. That might work. Um but I I that that is one of my concerns too is that. You know, there are a significant number of students and families. Who the bus situation isn't necessarily impacting, but a school start time adjustment will impact them. So I wanna just make that. A point two.
I think that's a a really good point and. It it dovetails with. One of my potential concerns here. So again, we have essentially three actions before us and. Um, the only one that I'm struggling with a little bit is the Shawshin West change because again, it seems. You know, it's like, oh, just ten minutes. But I think just as Mr. Samaha was saying, that's just like, well, sometimes ten minutes is not just. You know, I guess it's always ten minutes. Um, that's a logical truism, but um it can make a, you know, it can make a difference. Um. It doesn't always sound like much. Um but uh but but that that can be significant in some areas and um. I I I think that the proposal, what Mr. Samaha was just saying about making sure that. Some of the drop off that people have already arranged with is still perhaps available can be a way to ameliorate that. Um but. Uh in a, I I mean, I've looked at the times and so a five minute change obviously would help. Um but then according to the numbers we've seen, which it doesn't look like we can, even with the additional bus, we'll be able to move very much. Now we're closer to students arriving like just at the bell, which we've already said is not ideal. So I I mean. I've I understand the trade offs, but uh it's the only one that I'm still a little uncomfortable with. Alright, do we have? Any other questions or comments? Uh, Dr. Bryson, are you raising your hand? I can't quite tell. No, okay. Uh, alright, then we will move to public comment. Uh, Mr. Fennelly.
I started talking and I was still on mute. Sorry about that. Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so. As is uh often the case for public comment, we did receive. A number of uh pre-submitted public comments that were in the packets that I know we've all had a chance to review. Uh, we have two folks who signed up in advance to to speak at the meeting, so we will, we'll start with those. Anybody who would like to speak uh during the meeting uh down at the bottom. You should see a little smiley face labeled reactions. If you click on that, there's a raise hand feature. I'd ask that you raise your hand and we will uh we'll move through those as quickly as we can. Uh, as a reminder, please uh state your name and address for the record as clearly as you can, so it can be reflected in the minutes. And I would ask. Um, that you try as hard as possible to keep your comments to three minutes. We have thirty minutes allotted for public comments, so we want to be able to get to. Uh as many folks as we possibly can. So. With that being said, uh, find my list. Sorry, the first person we have signed up for public comment is Crystal Foster. Crystal, are you here?
I'm here. Hi.
Hi, Crystal. Good evening.
Um, so my name is Crystal Foster. I live at eleven Woodland Road. Um, I am the mom of two bus seventeen riders, one at Woburn Street and one at the north. Um. And. My biggest concern with the afternoons is that. Pretty soon it's gonna be dark and a few short weeks it is going to start getting dark when these kids get off the bus if we don't see significant changes. And I've heard a lot of comments tonight about how traffic is um. You know, is getting better in certain areas, but I think we're forgetting that there is gonna be construction on Lowell Street. Um imminently starting. I mean, I see it setting up uh in front of our bus stop, so. Um, the reduction in traffic that we're feeling now, I don't know how long that's going to last. Um. So I guess my biggest concerns with. With the updates are like, are we really looking at the routes and seeing? Um, you know, where we have buses crossing each other on the routes. And where we can alleviate that, like currently bus seventeen and bus five. Cross each other. Bus five passes us twice before our bus ever gets there. So I don't know if anyone has looked into like. Those sorts of issues where you can maybe split up routes um. By streets a little bit differently on the buses. Um. Yeah, and I guess it. Do we really think it's feasible to get all of these kids home by four o'clock or shortly thereafter?
Is that the conclusion of your comment?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Um, okay, the next person on our list, Patricia Naffiff. Patricia, are you on? Okay, hearing no comments. Uh, alright, we'll move to the folks who. Uh have their hands raised. Kristen Terry, Kristen, I saw your hand first whenever you're ready.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Kristen Terry. I live at sixteen Douglas Avenue. Um, so I just have a couple of. Thoughts about what I've heard tonight. Um, the first being. Dr. Brand mentioned something about bus stops with less kids. I just want to make sure that people um. Are accounting for if they're looking at changing the routes, parents that have now begun to drive their kids to school. I'm sure that is significantly changing the stops. Um. I myself, I have a first grader at Woburn Street and he. Is on bus fourteen and has had to wait thirty plus minutes every afternoon for the bus to come and has requested that. I now pick him up after school, so I'm sure I'm not the only one. I'm sure there's a lot of families. That are now having their kids be car riders. Um. So I just had that as a thought. And then in terms of the long term, you know, I would really love to see a plan where North and Woburn have essentially no wait time. You know, you changed it so our kids are getting out at three thirty, which is incredibly late. To plan something, we really can't do any sort of activities until four or later. My son's only in first grade. We don't have to deal with homework yet at this point, but I'm dreading what that'll look like in a couple of years. Um. You know, ideally, I'd really like to see a plan where all the schools can get out at a reasonable time. So I I just, I do encourage you to continue looking into that. How many buses do we need? So no one's getting out later than, you know, let's say three o'clock. Um. There was also a comment, I can't remember, somebody last week said. Let's look at, like, go backwards. So if the last child is getting off the bus at four o'clock, how can we go backwards? To see what time the buses need to come. Um, I don't know, four o'clock is just really late even for the last child to be getting. Off the school bus. So I really hope that you take that into consideration when you're looking at your long term plan. That is the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh Courtney Cattalo.
Hi again, Courtney Cattalo, eleven Kenwood Ave. Um, I kind of, Kristen stole a lot of my thunder there, but some of the things I wanted to mention. Um, again, was for us to be mindful of, and I'm not sure of anything of the schedule changes, so I can speak right now. My son's playing golf in the afternoon. I think we have a lot of students in our district who play fall sports that are right after. So. I do think like if our buses are starting to move um at a better rate, you know, they're, we're seeing them be more effective. That we have to consider, you know, how many students are not using the bus right now because of that then and then what impact that would have. So um Kristen had brought that up. And also to just be mindful of, like in the winter time in the morning, um I know the middle school and the high school, I'm assuming. And all the schools have the ski club and that's something that the town has prided itself in and my children have utilized. Um, and that creates more traffic because the equipment can't go on the buses. So I just think some proactive thinking of that. Um with our changes and shifts in times. Um, and I I did have. Um, just a few other comments that kind of the time on learning piece for me in the middle school, really. Um, the five to ten minutes, a hundred and eighty times a day. I mean, that's like twenty to forty blocks of 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 educational time our students are missing. Um, which I brought up last week, but that's about it. Um, thank you. I'm thankful for these discussions that are happening. Um, and that's all.
Thank you, Courtney. Uh, next, sorry, you, your name isn't listed, but you're coming up on the screen here is iPhone one thirty-six. Alright, we give you a minute, come back to that one. Uh, Ryan.
Hello.
Hey, Ryan.
Uh, Ryan, Ryan Kessler, nineteen Adam Street. Uh, just some quick comments this week, um since I've been here the last couple of weeks now. Um, I will say to Dr. Brands, you know, I just want to. Say I appreciate the presentation that was put together this week as opposed to, you know, some of the. Harsher, more direct comments that I made last week. I appreciate the data. It's been very informative and led to, I think, a much more. Um, you know, a deeper conversation on the facts that we can, you know, that the committee can truly analyze to make decisions. So. You know, like I said last time, I want to give credit where credit's due. I think it's obvious we can, you know, improvements continue to be made. I, you know, I ask and I appreciate looking at the level of service. So I would ask, you know, let's continue to, you know, maintain a high standard. Let's continue to look at options to improve the level of service. I think, you know. Obviously, I don't think we are aware anyone wants the level of service to be at this point, but I appreciate the committee. Looking at the data critically and finding areas for improvement. So I'll leave my comments at this. I'll leave my comments here for this week. Uh, looking forward to seeing you all in a couple more weeks.
Thank you, Ryan. Uh, okay, iPhone one thirty-six, one more time. Okay, with that, Mr. Chairman, I think public comment is done.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Fennelly. Uh, so now we need to uh vote on these um actual steps and propositions. Uh, so I want to uh take them in order. Um, so the. First one is a proposal to adjust uh the. Uh, I guess it doesn't matter which one we call them, but uh let's take the Boutwell first. So the first proposal is uh to adjust the Boutwell start times. Uh, by an adjustment of five minutes. Um, do we have a motion?
Motion to amend.
Uh, what, well, um, what is your, what is your amendment?
Uh, I'd like to amend that any changes to the Boutwell or the Shawshin are contingent on procuring uh staff to allow the school to be open. Earlier, as was discussed.
Um.
I wasn't quite sure if we had the staff to be there to allow the students to get in fifteen to twenty minutes earlier. That's why I'm coming up the motion.
Uh, Dr. Brand, could you?
Sorry, I just. Um, just to clarify, I'm sorry, I didn't earlier. Uh, the Boutwell uh is um. In a different position than the other schools because of the. Length of the school day for students. It is, it's considerably shorter than any of the other schools and so. Staff is already present and they're there, so I can um, I can tell you that uh the Boutwell. Already has staff on duty far before when schools uh students are being dropped off, so. I would um, I would say to you that that is a non-issue. That's already in place.
I'll withdraw my motion then for amendment for the Boutwell then. Thank you for clarifying.
Alright, so uh do we have a motion to uh alter the Boutwell start and end times um by adjusting it five minutes later? Mr. Turner.
I'm moving, so.
And a second, second by Dr. Bryson. And all members in favor? And one two, that is unanimous. Thank you. Voted unanimously. Uh, the second proposal is to adjust the start times of the West. And the Shawshin School again by adjusting it ten minutes later. Uh. So here I believe would be where Mr. McCalli, where your comment. Uh, or concern might uh might come into play. So before we start um throwing throwing motions out, let's discuss this a little bit. Um. Uh, so you want to make this change contingent. Upon. There would like there being coverage essentially um for people who need to drop off. At the current times. Okay, uh, just before we put this into a motion, um can we just kind of like talk this through a little bit?
Yeah, correct. That's the thinking was um from the discussion, making sure that. We don't have kids just sitting on a bus for ten minutes in the parking lot because that negates the benefit. And then also, um, I think Mr. Samaha brought up uh car riders. That, you know, there's a lot of working parents that have their commute set up and everything potentially that they're able to drop off their kids at. The earlier time in case they need that.
Uh, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna put my support to that as well, both both pieces of it, because I do think, I do think there is the element of making sure, Miss uh Brettress. Um, the change has the appropriate effect, which is the bus side of it, but then the what Mr. Samaha said it is really. That that twenty minute piece be available to both car riders and bus riders for those two schools. Um, so we can, we can mitigate that other concern, which was a very good one he raised. So I I I agree with Mr. McCalli. Doctor McCalli.
Dr. Brand, can you uh address? Um, ju- just address this issue so that we have a sense of how likely we are to be able to get that coverage? You may not know know an answer now, but I, but before we make the motion, I want to get a sense of what kind of feasibility we're thinking about.
For the, for, just to clarify a question for the additional coverage for both. Car riders as well as as this bus riders, is that right?
Correct, that Shawshin West. Yeah.
Um. Yeah, so. I mean, we're, we we will have supervision in place. The the question, the 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 question, it really goes to um. Number of car riders too. I mean, this is, so this is, this is an additional layer to this. And so we will. Uh, we will certainly put in place some adult supervision. Uh, the fifty, if if the question centers more around it, is it moving this beyond fifteen minutes? I mean, right now. I would have to stop short to say that we can commit to something like that. Fifteen minutes, uh, I'm confident to say it would come back to.
Dr. Bryson.
Just to clarify, my understanding last week was that the time was changing to match what was actually happening with the buses. So I understand the car riders don't fit in there. But if I'm looking at nine twenty-eight. That's not. Those times won't change. Lisa and Dr. Brand, right? Like, that's gonna be consistent. What we're doing is we're shifting the start. Lisa and Dr. Brand, right? Like, that's going to be consistent. What we're doing is we're shifting the start time so that those buses are no longer cutting it that close. So it, so I'm not real, so it looks like no matter what, the earliest I'm seeing at Shaw Sheen is eight 18 AM, which so say eight 20, right? School, it will now be starting at what time?
Eight forty.
Eight forty. So now, is that my understanding that we're, we're trying to match what's actually happening or am I?
Yes, so we, we are trying to match what the buses are actually doing. But I also want to put out there too, you know, that bus, I believe it was 14 that was dropping off very early. That bus has time and it can hold off dropping until eight 25 and still complete its north and Woburn route um on time. So you know, I'm not necessarily looking, I know we have a couple buses coming in at eight 20, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they need to be taken off. We can possibly even push back those pickup times a little bit. And you know, bring kids in a couple minutes later on some of the routes. But I can't, what I can't do is drop kids off all at eight 30, you know what I mean? So I do need a little bit extra time. Um, but I'm not saying we need to have, you know, all the buses that are coming in between eight 20 and eight 25 to still have to continue doing that.
Thanks, thanks.
Mr. Mr. Samaha.
Thanks. So yeah, as, as, so if, if the start time, the start time right now is, is eight 30 at the Shaw Sheen in the West. What time are students allowed in the building right now? Like, what time can students get into the building at the Shaw Sheen in the West? Are we talking? Eight twenty or?
One minutes prior to, to the bell, eight twenty.
So that, so eight 20 is what time they could get in now. If if we approve this with this 15 minutes, that's going to be just shifting from eight 20 to eight 25. Would be kind of the earliest.
Right.
Um, somebody, a, a student could enter the school. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, I think we're in a settled place here. Would someone like to offer a motion? Doctor Bryson.
I'm sorry, you need me to make the motion?
Yes, we need to state, we need to state the motion.
All right.
What it is we're proposing.
We're adjusting Shaw Sheen West from eight 30 to two 50 to eight 40 to 3 PM, 10 minutes later.
Uh, with the amendment, right? Or no?
Uh, you're
Yeah, I'm not. So I don't have that written. I'm not exactly sure how you want that to read, Mike. So why don't you add that?
Yeah, so um, the motion would be to change the Shaw Sheen and West intermediate start times by 10 minutes to start time at eight 40 and time at 3 PM. And it's contingent on the administration procuring staff to allow both schools to open 15 minutes before starting to allow students to come in.
All right, I'll accept that. That sounds good. I think that's what we, we were discussing. That I believe that captures it. So uh, I accept that as a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Fennelly, uh, all in favor?
Can we just discuss one more minute? I'm sorry, David.
Up, sure, motion. Fair point. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dr. Brandon and Lisa. Is that something that we can do within the timeframe you've you've listed here?
Just to clarify, you need to make this adjustment?
To make this adjustment contingent upon the 15 minutes entry with proper staffing? That's the motion on the floor right now.
Yeah, just to clarify this, sorry, just to clarify this. So, so if the motion here is the school committee's support for this adjustment in time, as long as the administration can assure that we have staff supervision in place for 15 minutes beforehand, then that's certainly something that that can be supported. I can support this.
Uh, Mr. Fennelly.
Well, and, and so I'm clear and Dr. Bryson, don't let me put words in your mouth. I think Jen was also asking that the projected date you have on here is October 16th. Are you confident that you can make those stipulations by that date so we can make the change?
Uh, yes, and if you, but I'll put a but in there, but if uh that contingency there is placed here and we need to delay that start, clearly, we will communicate broadly and widely to staff and to families as to when this will take effect. Um, I understand the concern of the committee um, and the linkage of both supervision and this change in time.
Thank you, Mr. Samaha.
Thank you. And so I just want to clarify again. Would that, so that staff, would it be, would it be we're part of, one of the reasons that we're doing this is to accommodate car riders as well. Are we talking? This is, are we saying that staff allowing students to come in 15 minutes early means that any student, whether they're coming off a bus, whether they're walking, whether they're getting dropped off, would be allowed to come into the school at eight 25? Is that what we're saying here with this contingency?
Uh, it's a good question you raised. So so really the heart, I just want to back this up a little bit. The heart of this is putting into place an extended level of supervision prior to the contract requirements. Um, this is not necessarily, and I, I, I'm sorry, I'm not clarifying this early, necessarily that we're going to open the doors and allow all students in the building. It is to provide supervision for the unloading of students five minutes earlier than uh is typically the case now. As is always the case, regardless of this conversation, if there's inclement weather, uh, students that are being dropped off earlier, plus they're moving into the building. But I just want to clarify that this is not a, all doors will be sort of opening when anyone arrives in 15 minutes. But that, that will be a management issue there. Our priority focus will be ensuring their staff supervision onsite to supervise if the buses are unloaded 15 minutes prior to the start of school.
Jay, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that, that's where, I mean, I think that, I mean, this is the part of it where it gets, it gets difficult for me. Um, because I, this is, this is and I'm just going to sort of just explain a little bit of my, my thinking is I, I want to solve this bus problem, right? But I don't want to create another problem in solving and solving this problem. I think that what has been explained tonight and all the discussion about this, it will have a positive impact on bus riders. But I also don't want to, I also don't want to negatively impact people that currently dropped their kid off at you know, you know, eight 25, and now they're being asked, now they can't drop their kid off till eight 30 or eight 35, and that might then sort of mess up their schedule. So that's part of what I'm, what I'm struggling with here is, you know, is when we're making decisions, we want to be considering, you know, everybody um in, in the process.
Mr. Turner.
There's one point of clarification on contractual requirements for the teachers and their schedule. Um, it's October 5th, they're suggesting October 16th is 10 days because you wouldn't be able to notify them till tomorrow. It's 10 days enough notification period in the contract.
Contract requires two weeks for one group, uh, one staffing group. Um, educational assistance, I have been in discussions already and put on uh, that was the deputy to the president regarding this. Um, so whether or not we're talking about additional time for the supervision piece, we don't understand the periods linkage of these two things, but even if you are supporting this change in the start times and here, again, if we have a bus show up and there is not supervision there, then that bus will not be able to.
So, sorry, I wasn't clear. My, my question is not about the supervision piece this time. My question is about just the entire population of the school staff. The different, four different, three or four different uh contractual arrangements we have with them. Notice period to change the start time of the actual school day from eight 30 to eight 40. What notice period do we have to require? Are we required to give them in the contract? Is it two weeks or is it 10 days or is it zero?
Educational assistance is the only group that requires uh two weeks. Um, and as indicated that, and um, surprise the deputy chief of that already.
Okay, thank you.
I want to jump in for a second. I think that, I, I think that Jay's concern is a, is a valid one because even though this has largely been a sort of a bus discussion, when we talk about changing start times of the schools, that doesn't just affect kids who ride the bus. That affects everyone who attends the school like one way or another. Um, you know, however, you're getting um dropped off there either by bus or by, you know, by being a car rider. Um, then, then that, that affects them as well. Um, even if it's less of an issue than um than what we've been talking about with the bus, with the bus system. I, I think that I I think we should still move forward with this um motion. I still support the motion as um as proposed. But I think we need to keep an eye on this issue and potentially address it if it, you know, if, if we basically get information that this is becoming a real problem, then I think we need to, you know, potentially address that. Um, but uh, but I think for the moment, this is still um the, the best option that we have at the moment and that we need to keep an eye on it. Uh, further discussion. All right, seeing none.
I'm so sorry. I'm just, um, I will vote in favor. I'm not comfortable with this amendment just because it's not what the people who have been spending this amount of time working on for countless hours every single day. This, that's not what they came to us with. And so I'm a little hesitant. I'll vote in favor. I don't want to hold this up with a, with a word change like that, but I don't think it is a good it's, I have not been putting in those countless hours that Len and his team and Lisa and some of our school committee members have been sitting in some of those meetings as well. I just feel like it's, those little word changes can be really detrimental to it, to something like this. And that's, so I'm worried that are we doing, are we hurting ourselves? Um, are we hurting ourselves by saying there has to be this 15-minute time, although I don't disagree? But are we going to stop things up is my, is my concern here. So I just wanted to make that point. I'm not going to hold up this vote, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Turner.
I think that's, it's a, a good way to describe it, Dr. Bryson. Um, Dr. Brand, i- is, is there a risk that we won't be able to meet the October 16th deadline with this sort of change? But I, my, my understanding, sorry, let me finish. I should have finished the conversation with the comment. My understanding from prior conversation is that this, as you said, has already been somewhat in discussion with the educational assistance. And, and so it, my understanding was it was contemplated not necessarily as a requirement, but as part of the overall improvement process. So is that fair to say that this would not slow this down or put it at risk?
It, it is, but I, I'd like to, if I may, sorry, Mr. Bryson, but I, I think the uh, from my perspective, uh, the, the key thing here, and please correct me if you think differently, but the key thing here is your authorization to change the school start times. The implementation date, um, from my perspective, doesn't necessarily need to be linked directly to that. If we need to provide, again, it's fully understood. I'm a, I'm a parent myself. If I'm on the receiving end or a staff member, there needs to be time for this notice. If it feels like we need to make this an adjustment and push this out by a week, so be it. But we know that we still have the ability to do so by your vote to approve the start time change tonight. From my perspective, I think that that's the key here. Uh, if you provide it and provide the, and I know how you might want to word it in your motion, but provide the allowance for the administration to implement this, implement this change when we believe it is most appropriate. Um, then that would be, I think, helpful here.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All right, uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor. And all opposed? All right, so the motion passes five one with Mr. Samaha in opposition. All right, and that brings us to um number three, which is the addition uh of, um, of one more bus. And do we have a motion to authorize Mr. Rogero um to contract with North Reading Transportation for one additional bus? Motion by Mr. Fennelly?
Uh, yes, some of, I, I think last time and, and Paul, I don't know if this still stands, but we had, we had phrased it so, you know, we authorize you to spend up to, I think it was $62,000 to uh procure a, a new bus. Is that fitting for this?
Yeah, I, if I may.
Please.
If you want to put it, put that tight, yeah, if we're going to do that, maybe we'll just use 65,000. You know, I, I won't spend it if I don't have to, but just to give just to make sure I didn't miss any little cost here or there. Um, and if it's more than that, then obviously we'll come back to the school committee, but I think if you say 65, we should be fine.
All right, so then I would move to authorize the, the Assistant Superintendent of Administration and Finance to use up to $65,000 for a new bus.
All right, motion and second, second by Mr. Turner. Motion and second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, and our next item is uh the town polling location vote. Uh, Dr. Brand, would you like to just quickly recap?
Sure, um, discussion here. Um, uh, you recall the la, the last meeting, I shared a uh joint memo from uh Commander Hall and myself to uh both the school committee as well as the select board. On a proposal that is um before you for your consideration. Again, with the closure, excuse me, with the closure of the Wildwood that has created um some additional challenges for the town as it relates to voting. You recall, as outlined in that memo, that the proposal um that is being made is to temporarily use the high school um as a new voting site to take on uh some of the precincts. Uh, the memo went into great detail about the alignment of those precincts. Uh, the Batwell would still be used for voting as it has been done for uh quite some time. The town hall will still be a, a voting center um and the high school temporarily to help out. Um, there is particular concern around providing um access to community members, especially going into the next voting cycle that will include, of course, as you know, a presidential election. Uh, we talked at quite some length with Town Manager Hall. Uh, I'm supportive of allowing the high school to be used for voting during this um temporary period. Again, when the new town hall school administration building opens. Um, it is the, um, is the belief that actually all, if not all, almost all of the voting will be able to be relocated there. We uh, we outlined in the memo some provisions around security, um, monitoring of the voters. Uh, the impact on parking, of which it's not insignificant, um, but it is overall a plan that I uh, I very much think we can support. Provides the residents with access to facilities, so certainly uh to exercise their civic right. And logistically, we would have some things to work through, um, but I'm confident that we can, including parking, um, and so on. Uh, it's not appropriate to have this before you as a committee to vote to authorize the, the, allow the town, I'm sorry, the use of the high school uh for voting. Um, and that's the uh purpose of, of this item tonight. I'll pause there. If there are any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer this.
So at the, at the last meeting, uh, there was no objections on the part of the committee, but we did ask for some additional information about what other options um had been uh pursued. And uh, even if we approve uh voting at the high school, there is still a question of whether that should occur while school is in session or whether um we should close the district um on the days of those, of those uh elections. And, and that is what we want to firm up before we uh take a vote. Uh, Mr. Fennelly.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Brand. Thank you. I know you had at some point, forgive me, the days blend together, had the, sent some information that, that Mr. Hall uh had provided, and I know, and thanks to him, that they had looked at some other uh locations and for various reasons, they weren't uh appropriate. And so uh, thank you for sharing that. Um, I will say
Um, I will say, I personally have no objection to this. I actually went to high school in a district where the high school was the town's central voting location and school was open and our town's police department worked to make sure that, you know, that part of the building was, was separate for the day. And so, um, I will say that I, I support the idea. I, I, I am in favor of keeping the schools open that day. I don't think we should lose an instructional day. But I am curious, Dr. Brand, if you could expand a little bit just on conversations that, uh, perhaps Chief Desmond or the School Resource Officer have been involved in and, um, aside from, you know, I think what might be the obvious. Are there concerns on their part? Do they, um, have they, you know, put together preliminary thoughts or how they might be able to make sure the, you know, the, the, the gym portion of the building is able to stay separate and secure while school's in session?
Um, yeah, so, um, the conversations with the police have, um, been through, uh, just to be clear, through the town manager's office. Uh, but it is, it is completely understood that, that, my support of this is that there will be additional, uh, police presence, number one, that there is the expectation that we will, um, literally divide the entrance and exit routes such that students are not, uh, directly, um, interacting with voters or vice versa. So, um, that's a plan that has been explored and vetted and, uh, please, certainly from my understanding, are on board for, uh, for that very thing. If, if I may, just to, I want to just circle back though to one point, um, Mr. Fennelly, that you mentioned, and just to clarify here. There are, uh, there are a collection of dates here for that voting will take place over the span of, let's call it, year and now. The, uh, the intention is, as you mentioned, to have school open for voting when school's still in session, and we will work around the logistics. I will say that there is a, um, there is a concern from the town, uh, around the presidential election specifically on, um, in November, uh, twenty twenty-four, and, uh, and the hope that there was consideration for us not holding school in session on that date simply because of the expectation of a huge turnout that day. Um, I was very clear in the conversation with Mr. Hall that ultimately the school committee, sorry, the school committee has authority over the calendar. And it is not the intent to talk about the calendar here this evening with you. Uh, but that decision around the calendar and whether or not the presidential election date is or is not a school day in session is something that I would suggest to you needs to be determined. But all of the other dates that we're talking about here, um, the full plan here is to have school in session.
All right, any further questions or discussions? Uh, Mr. Samaha?
Thank you. So just, just to clarify, um, voting on this tonight, uh, the, the, the question of closing the school during the presidential election is not a part of the vote tonight. We're just voting to have this as a location. And then whether or not school is closed on that presidential election day is a discussion for when we consider the calendar. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, um, I am also, uh, feeling, leaning similarly to Mr. Fennelly in that, uh, I, I, I will consider, um, the issue when we discuss the calendar of the presidential election, but in general, um, am not in favor of closing the district. Uh, unless it truly, um, seems like it would be necessary. Uh, there will be a few logistical things to work out, um, with, with parking, especially when the new Town Hall administration building gets underway, uh, when the construction begins there. But, uh, I think that for, for the, the small number of days we're talking about, we can, we can work around that. Maybe we could even use, you know, St. Thomas's parking lot. Um, but that's all, I believe, implementation details that, uh, that we can work out, um, moving forward into the future. Any further questions? Uh, all right, so, um, do we have a, a motion to approve the use of Wilmington High School, uh, for the elections? Uh, presidential primary election and presidential election of twenty twenty-four. Uh, motion by Mr. Fennelly, seconded by Mr. Samaha. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, that is voted unanimously. All right, and that brings us to the end of our agenda. And, uh, if there is nothing else, I will entertain, uh, a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Motion by Mr. Fennelly and seconded by Mr. Turner, all in favor? And that is unanimous. We are adjourned and thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Everyone, good night.
Good night.